Okay, good evening, everyone. We will start tonight's regular meeting with the offering of the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilman Brandon McCullough. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Mr. McCullough. Good evening, welcome to the 1,948th regular meeting of the Livonia City Council. Tonight's meeting will be a voting meeting, and minutes of this meeting will be approved at the next regular meeting scheduled for Monday, July 25th of 2022. At this time, I'll ask our city clerk, Ms. Nash, to take the roll call.
Councilmember McCullough?
Present.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Here.
Vice President Toy?
Here.
Councilmember Barr?
Here.
Councilmember Donovan?
Here.
Councilmember Morgan?
Here.
President Jolly?
Present. We have our entire team tonight. At this time, I will entertain a motion for the minutes of the June 27th, 2022, regular meeting.
I will move approval without edit.
Support.
We have a motion from McIntyre, support from McCullough. Any council communication on that?
Mr. President?
Mr. Barr?
I'll be voting present, since I was not here for the last meeting.
Thank you. Any audience communication on those minutes? I see none. Ms. Nash, please take the vote.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Present.
Councilmember Donovan?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The minutes pass. At this time, the city council tonight has dedicated about 10 minutes or so to honoring one of our local teams, our robotics team here in Livonia from Livonia Public Schools. We have the Livonia Warriors, Tyros, and Robo Falcons. Those are from LPS in general, and the Robo Falcons Frost in particular. So at this time, if we can have some students come up here to tell us about their accomplishments, and the coaches, and then we're gonna have a demonstration as well. This is always one of our favorite, I think the last time we did this was 2017. So we're happy to be doing it again. Have you all here. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you so much for inviting our program here this evening. We do have the Livonia Warriors Turbulence Robot, which is 2832. This team consists of students from Stevenson, Franklin, and Churchill. They are all upperclassmen, and the Turbulence Robot did qualify for state and world championship this year. Over here, we have the Flying Dutchman. The Flying Dutchman is 6861, and he is a robot that is constructed primarily by ninth graders. That is a ninth grade team. And that ninth grade team also qualified for state championship this year. And out front, we have a little, a little robot over there. His name is Wally. And don't underestimate Wally. Wally qualified for state championship, won state championship, went to world championship, and competed with teams from all over the world as well. So we have a talented group of students producing talented products here. And so at this time, I'm going to ask that the Robo Falcons come up, and just take a couple minutes and tell you a little bit about their season, and then we have some students that are gonna demonstrate that little robot for you.
Of course. Hey, come... Tell us who you are. Tell us your names, please.
I'm Kanav.
I'm Uvia.
I'm Alex.
I'm Carson.
Welcome. So who's gonna tell us about your accomplishments?
Alright, so we're the 2021 to 2022 Frost Robo Falcons. And we're a team of primarily seventh and eighth graders from Frost Middle School. So we basically went to the qualification matches, and we did quite well. And we got qualified for states by winning a certain set of awards and doing well at the competitions. When we went to states, luck turned our way, and because of the skill of all of our drivers, and everything came together, and we ended up winning states and becoming the state champions, which qualified us to become one of the teams that went to the world championship in April. So we went to the world's championship, and we did quite well there. We ended up around 50th overall out of about over 1,000 teams this season. And it went really well for us. And as a first-time kind of ordeal to states and worlds, it was an amazing experience.
Good job. If we, if we can keep you up there just for a minute, we have commendations here for you and the Warriors as well. We're gonna ask Councilwoman McIntyre at this time to present your commendation. She is a Frost, well, a former Frost mom, so she knows Frost well, and it'll be a little bit, a little bit more meaningful coming from a mom.
Thank you. This is, this certificate is presented to the Livonia Robo Falcons Robotics Team on behalf of the City of Livonia, Michigan. Please accept our sincerest congratulations to Livonia Robo Falcons Robotics Team on qualifying for the 2022 First Robotics World Championship in Houston, Texas. We are proud of you and your achievement, and wish you much success in the future, and we really are very proud of you. And we understand the, even if this, well, some of us, robotics was not a thing when we were in junior high, or high school, or college, or grad school. But we certainly, all of us can understand and appreciate the skill, the work, the dedication, and giving up a lot of time that it takes to make this happen. And I know that there are a lot of supporters of you, the parents, the coaches, the teachers, and the audience. So congratulations to everyone, and we really are very, very proud of you. So if you'd like to come up and get a picture?
Come on up, and then, um, the council wants to condense behind. No, just condense back here, and then they can... So we'll take a picture right now, and if anybody wants to stand up and take a picture, if you just wanna take the commendation here and stand in front of us. You're the, you're the stars here, so...
And then, let's see.
Oh, sure.
Great.
Kneel down a little bit, so we can...
They're all so tall.
Does somebody hold? Yep, okay.
Great job. We'll give you a chance to demonstrate here in a couple minutes as well, okay?
Mr. President? If I may, just, just a couple of real quick comments?
We... Oh, go ahead.
Can I, can I just say what a fantastic job my colleague, Mother McIntyre, did? But I gotta tell you, I went to Frost, seventh, eighth, and ninth grade, I was a phantom. So I don't wanna be remiss in being skipped over, so that I, you know, I'm a Frost phantom and a Bentley Bulldog. So, you know, sir, I just, I just... I didn't think you had an idea of that, so I wanted to say, and I also want to explain to people why I wasn't in the picture. I am allergic to the vaccine, and I have to stay away from a lot of people. And in fact, I had six people at my store get COVID just last week. So I wanna be safe for you, and you wanna be safe for me. And I didn't want you to think I was not part of my colleagues, because they do a terrific job, but that's why I'm in this popemobile. No, thank you.
So Ms. Toy, I thought they dropped you off at Bentley as a baby and just left you there the whole time, but...
Yes, sir. It's true, sir.
So we'll go back. Coach, can you tell us about?
Yes. At this time, I'm not gonna take a whole lot of time talking about a lot of different things. I'm going to introduce you to Melissa Barbat, who is our chairman's captain for the Livonia Warriors, and she's gonna tell you a little bit about our season.
Hi, I'm Melissa. This is my fourth year on the team, and I'm just gonna talk a little bit about this past season. So this past season has been incredible. After a year and a half of virtual meetings and competitions, everyone was excited to return to a more traditional structured season. This past season, our team not only won the Livonia District Competition after winning every elimination match, but also won the chairman's award for the second time in two years. This is the most prestigious award that an FRC team can win, and evaluates how well a team impacted its community over the past three years, not just one season. These successes allowed our team to attend the state and world championships. At Worlds Week, we received the Creativity Award sponsored by Rockwell Automation because of both creative and practical mechanisms on a robot, such as the silicone lightning bolts that direct balls inside. This is the second time the Warriors have attended Worlds, but the first time that we have won an award there. Two weeks ago, we attended our first off-student competition this year and won first place. Besides aiming to compete and do well, our team also strives to help others in the community. During both of our district competitions, we helped the Rising Stars, a team of disabled adults, by providing a drive team for them after their drive team got overstimulated. We also invited the Cyber Cougars to our practice field and helped them build and program a robot a week before their competition. For the past two years, we have held a virtual workshop called Coding Fundamentals for all four upper elementary schools in Livonia. With a total of over 150 attendees, these workshops were geared to help teach younger students how to code. We started by using block coding, but we were able to expand and lead a session using a more complex language, Python Turtle, this past spring. Additionally, this past season, our team created a comic book titled The Power of Inspiration with an original storyline and artwork to distribute around the world. Students on the team translated the comic book into Spanish, French, and German, then gave it to a native speaker to proofread. The purpose of this comic book is to educate more people about First Robotics and inspire them to join the program. We will take the lessons we have learned this season and use them to improve and adapt in the future. Thank you for letting us speak.
Thank you, Melissa. At this time, we are going to have the Frost Robo Falcons just kinda show you what their robot does. So we've got a couple drivers are gonna come down and do that at this time, and...
Before we do that, sorry, Coach. Mr. McCullough has a commendation for the Warriors. We'll just let him read that off, and then we'll get to the...
So, real fast, I gotta thank all of you guys, because my daughter Harper and I, you guys, you guys made us feel like the team at Churchill, and we got to see everything firsthand. I'm sorry I don't have my goggles on. I should've thought about that. But no, I mean, it was so incredible, you know, seeing you guys up there, the cheer, it blew my mind to see the camaraderie, the competition, and then getting the tour of the pit yard. And I think we walked away with, I think we got a challenge coin with, from the pirate, and seeing the 2832 really knock everybody out of, you guys destroyed the competition, and like, I think in four or five different events, so. Well done, and thank you again for all the hospitality. It blew my mind. I know we spoke about, what is it, the Legos? Getting the Legos incorporated, so we could even go even lower, and I think that's elementary school. So thank you all for all, everything that you do, at least from that level, it was amazing to see everything, and great job. But on behalf, this, this is a commendation from the city council, this certificate is presented to the Livonia Warriors Robotics Team. On behalf of the City of Livonia, Michigan, please accept our sincerest congratulations to the Livonia Warriors Robotics Team on qualifying for the 2022 First Robotics World Championship in Houston, Texas. We're all very proud of you, and congratulations again. We gotta do another glamour job.
If all the Warriors wanna come up and take the certificate, and we'll take a picture as well?
Livonia Warriors?
Alright, come on up again. We got seventeen more pictures. What do we say on three, guys? Come on. Champs? Robots on three? One, two, three?
Robots!
Come on!
Warriors, right?
Warriors!
Alright, so, as fun as it was listening to us talk, us talk, up here on council, we're ready for the demonstrations. So let's, uh... Five bucks to the first person who can shoot a ball at Mr. McCullough.
I'll actually, I'll increase that to $10, so...
I think what we'll do is, we're gonna do that little robot first, because this one could literally just run over it. So, um, so I'm going to ask Uvia to come up, and she'll just tell you a little bit more about Frost while these guys set up their demonstration. So drivers, go set yourself up and get ready to go.
I personally, I'm so glad to be a part of Robotics, because it's such an inviting team of people. It's people that I've known for almost all my life, and we're inviting a lot of new people. It's a very just homely environment, and I love being there, and I love doing the things that we do on the team. And I'm really proud of us this year, because we made it to states, we got to semifinals in all of our qualifying competitions, and we made it to states through the Inspire Award, which we actually got first place and second place in two different competitions. And at states, it was a really mind-boggling experience to win the entire competition, especially after getting there through awards. Going to Worlds was an amazing experience. It was great to go there for like, I think it was five days. And it was, it was a lot more intense than the other competitions, but I think that just made it 10 times better, because we all were just like, it was really rushed, but we all really enjoyed it. So I'm so glad that we did this.
We're very proud of all of you.
Thank you.
Alright, here we go.
Alright, here it is.
Do you think that thing has enough power to pick up Council McCullough and take him out of the building?
Wally?
That's how I was escorted out of the First Robotics Competition.
Way to make an exit.
One thing is very consistent in robotics: something always breaks. So I'm going to ask the Warriors and the Tyro Drive Teams to come up, and they're going to show you modified how these robots move a little bit. Now, these, the, the red bumpers picks up the red balls, and the blue bumpers pick up the blue balls. This robot can pick up any color ball, the Flying Dutchman, but that robot, if it picks up a blue ball, it spits it back out. It's supposed to do that, because it has a color sensor. So just so you know what's going on with that. And our drivers will show you how these robots move. The 6861 is on a Meccanum drive. That robot can go frontwards, backwards, and sideways, and on a diagonal. And Turbulence over there is, he's really our first robot ever that has been on Swerve drive. And it is a robot that can move in any direction at any time. It's, it's pretty cool that way. So I'll let the kids move these guys. And this Flying Dutchman is supposed to be a boat. Is it a boat? It's, it's a ghost ship, pirate ship, and it climbs with these, with these stands. And the Turbulence is an airplane.
I'm all about that.
Oh, I like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, right here, guys. Right here. Let's go. Hey, I signed, I signed the waiver. Yeah, let's go.
You better watch it, Kathleen.
Just don't hit the Red Bull, guys, alright?
That's great. That's amazing.
Oh, it cleans up after itself.
That's just amazing.
Can you bring that over to my house?
I know. Let's see what you got.
Awesome. Alright, Jen, you're on the clock.
Oh, Jesus, come on!
That's cool.
Alright, let's see what you got.
Uh-oh. Alright, yeah. This is, let's just do this the entire meeting, guys. This is the most fun we've ever had at a basketball meeting.
Alright, back this way. There we go.
Let's go, Kathleen.
It's like dodge...
We're not gonna shoot.
Laura, be careful.
Guys, we're not, we're not gonna shoot. Turbulence is a wicked robot, so we are not going to shoot him. But I would like you to demonstrate his drive.
Yeah, that's cool. Like the Hummer.
Damn it. Uh-oh, the Dutchman's coming out.
And both of these robots have climbers that they, they climb the jungle gym, so they were very successful with all that. We wanna thank you so much for having us tonight. We're gonna get on your...
Thank you so much.
Coach, 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 coach? I do wanna ask, maybe you can answer on behalf of your teams. But one of the, one of the issues in policy and kind of philosophy, right, and ethics, it's arising, if AI will be able to become smarter than humans?
Or your local elected officials.
But, but I just, I just wonder, because, because this is the generation, the kids who are gonna, you know, who are really at the forefront of this. And so do you think that that's a scenario where AI will, you know, overcome and overtake human intellect? Well, Ms. McIntyre, you need to understand that basically the problem is in English. However, I've learned a few things about robotics, but I know a whole lot more about people, and I don't think that that will ever really happen. Good to hear. Good to hear, because we don't wanna, at the next election, we don't want a few of these spaces filled by the Flying Dutchman or 2832. But this is remarkable, and it's a kind of thinking, too, that, you know, amazing. The kids might disagree with you.
Yeah, I've heard of, is it Skynet?
Fantastic. Is working a scooch all of our stuff right around corners? Will the first get coupled to a little bit?
I think Mr. Donovan wants to say a quick word, real quick, and...
Just briefly, to my colleague's point, you know, you kids here are the future generation that's gonna make all this possible. And it's really interesting, and I'm really thankful that you took the time out to come to us tonight and show us the great works you guys have done. I mean, this is really awesome. I'm 30 years old, and I think this is the neatest thing I've seen in a long time. I find myself online a lot, watching the, the machines that beat each other up a lot. And I was waiting for these green eyes to turn red and start attacking us. Kinda like iRobot, but just super awe-inspiring, very neat. And a few people had reached out to me on social media about what you guys had accomplished, and I was kinda following along, and just really, really awesome, and congratulations to all of you guys, great job.
Thanks again. Thank you so much. Thank you all.
I'm going to ask the Warriors and the Tyros to come up and try to pick up something, and let's go all move in there, and we'll let them get...
So I, I'm gonna speak while you're cleaning up, but thank you so much for everything that you've done, and good luck for everything that's to come.
Thank you. Very nice. Congratulations, everyone.
Okay, so at this time, I will introduce our department heads who are here. We have Ms. Sarah Casperitz, who's a, you know what, I'm gonna make, I'm gonna wait a second.
Thank you. Thank you. Good job, good job. That's a good job, guys. Hey, how did those go in the snow?
Okay.
Coach, did, did something fall off?
No, it was something else.
Okay.
So, at this time, I'll introduce our department heads who are here. So I can see, we have Todd Zlinsik, our city attorney, Paula Bernier, our city attorney, Susan Nash, our city clerk, Ms. Sarah Casperitz, our city council manager, and a new friend, I'm not sure his name.
Jacob Yehazi with planning. I'm here for Mark.
There you go. Filling in, hopefully you don't do a better job than Mark does. I don't want, I don't want Mark to sweat too much here. And I think, I can't see who's... Sean, Linda Scheel, and Brandy is back there as well. Our director of housing, our city treasurer, and our director of governmental affairs. So at this time, we will move to audience communication. Anybody in the audience can address the council on any issue or item that is not on the agenda for this evening for up to three minutes at the beginning of the council session here. So if you are here for audience communication at this time, please approach the podium. Good evening, ma'am, please tell me your name and address for the record.
My name is Carol Ely. It's 29467 Bobbert Street, Livonia, Michigan. And I'm really here, I guess, on the behalf of all the citizens of Livonia, because I went to the Sandberg Library today, as I do almost every week, and have been for the 22 years I've lived in Livonia. And kind of upset that they have to put a sign up at the library asking for help from the citizens to clean up the library. I took pictures today, I don't know if any of you have been over there recently, but I have addressed this before with the mayor's office, and haven't seen a lot being done. When they cut the grass over there, they leave all the glass, grass creppings on the lawn. So in two days, when they turn brown, you have strings of grass on the lawn. No weeding is ever done that I can see. There are weeds in all the beds. When you walk into the library, it looks terrible. Front doesn't look quite as bad, although that isn't very well taken care of either. And I'm just kind of concerned that something's happening, that they've decided to let the library go, and they're just gonna let it go downhill. And it seems pretty sad to me that everything around here and in the city area is manicured to a T, and yet we have a library that's not anything happening to at all. So that's my reason for coming. I told the librarian I would be here. I would encourage all of you to go over there and take a look. And I'd really appreciate it for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. We'll refer that item to our governmental affairs specialist with the mayor's office, and then hopefully they'll follow back up with you.
I will let them know that I was here, too. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else for audience communication? Good evening ma'am, tell me your name and address please.
Teresa Corey, 16318 Richfield Street. So the reason I'm here today is regarding our, losing our electricity. So I've been in Livonia for about nine years and we've lost our power consecutively, I think this year we've already lost it five or six times. And when I went to go call DTE to find out about the problem, she said it was the grid in that area. So she looked at my address and she said she could see that I was in a high loss area. So I asked her if there's anything that can be done and she said, no, I suggest you move. So DTE said that I should move out of Livonia, I guess. And I mentioned to her that I'm thinking about getting an electric car and she said, well, good luck with that. So I guess I'm here to find out, is, does, is Livonia aware of this intersection that always loses power? I also have another neighbor that has to take medication, that has to stay cold. So they're afraid to leave because if they lose their power, then they have to run home, get the generator hooked up and I guess it's a real expensive medicine that they have to take on a daily basis. So I just wanted to see if Livonia was even aware of this problem. Because DTE doesn't seem to want to help, so.
So as you know, the utilities are under the purview of the state of Michigan. We are actively engaging with the states and the utility providers to correct these situations. Again, Ms. Thomas is in the back of the auditorium here. Maybe if you stop by and talk to her on the way out, she'll make a special note and the administration's in somewhat frequent communication with those providers.
Okay.
Thank you so much ma'am.
Alright, thank you.
Anybody else for audience communication? Going once, going twice. At this time, we will move to council communication. Does anybody on the city council have anything to address at this time? Ms. McIntyre?
I do, Mr. Jolly, our chairman. We have three retirees that, who retired in June. First is Owen Keaton, a senior police officer, retired on June 23rd, 2022 with 25 years of service. Shane Rebant, senior police officer, retired on June 24th, 2022 with 25 years of service. And from the fire department, Todd Sampson, a battalion chief, retired on June 3rd, 2022 with 25 years of service. We thank all three of these individuals for their outstanding contributions to Livonia's outstanding and exceptional public safety departments. Each of them with 25 years and we wish them very happy and healthy and long retirement.
Thank you very much.
So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. President.
Ms. Toy?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted to share with all of us, if you don't already know, Old Mexico, which has been in this community many, many years, is gonna be closing its doors this, coming up weekend. And it's very sad. I think we all have to learn a lot of patience, which we're all learning in this new environment we all live in, this new normal. It's very hard to get employees and employees that stay and I'm sure Mr. Donavich can attest to that, he's a business owner as I am. And those of you that have jobs and get a paycheck every two weeks or every week, God bless you, but I'm telling you, you gotta, you gotta support your local businesses and you've got to have patience in this time. These people are working very hard and we are very prideful of our businesses here. And it's hard to see a long time business go out. It's not only because of those reasons, from what I understand, but I think they should be recognized as a very solid business. When Ramon and Vicky, those of you that weren't born yet, they owned that for many years. So I'm very empathetic to those causes of folks that own these businesses that are finding, you know, shortages in, in many ways. So please, support your local people, especially your independents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Toy. Mr. Barr?
Alright, two items, Mr. President. First of all, I want to, and I see that she's left, but the woman that expressed concern about Sandberg Library, there, there was a couple that reached out to council members back in early June about the same issue. I had an opportunity to communicate with them and through the course of that communication, encouraged them to consider organizing some, some neighborhood folks to, to do some volunteer work over there and also encouraged them to get something through the city grant program, which I believe they've done. And my suspicion is that the sign that she saw is probably that group recruiting volunteers for an event on Saturday, August 6th to, to clean up Sandberg Library. And I actually think it's a great example of Livonia's citizens coming together and caring about their community. So my, my suspicion is that that's what that is. It's, it's not a city cry for help. It's, I mean, you can say what you want about what the city upkeep is over there and I understand some of the concerns, but I applaud those residents for doing that. The, the second item, maybe a little bit more serious matter that I want to address with council tonight is, and just some, some brief context. Actually last, I think it was last fall or maybe earlier this year, that one of my fellow council members was involved in a flag raising ceremony here at city hall. And at that time, while I didn't necessarily have an issue with, with what he was doing, I was concerned about what kind of precedent that set for the city and what issues that might create in the future. And so when, when another one of my council colleagues contacted me after the May Supreme Court decision, in which the Supreme Court ruled against the city of Boston for, for turning down a requested flag at city hall based on their history of allowing other flags and, and suggested that, that we enact some sort of policy to, to protect us from such action in the future, I was very, very receptive to that. And thus, very pleased when Mayor Brosnan, in, in earlier mid-June, I don't have the exact date in front of me, issued a policy presumably in response to those concerns that stated, and I, I've got a few things written down here, stated that the city would discontinue the practice, I'm quoting now, "discontinue the practice of raising flags that represent other countries' ideals." Close quote. Her statement went on to say that when we choose to fly only the US, state and city flags, we prevent lawsuits and eliminate the perception of bias. And then several days later, in an apparent response to a resident's request to raise a particular non-governmental flag at city hall, the mayor changed that policy that she had just enacted. Now saying that a closer reading of the Supreme Court decision revealed, and I'm quoting again, "an opportunity for cities like Livonia to approve flags as an expression of the city's official sentiments." And she went on to say that flags are, quote, "flags that are, quote, authorized by city council resolution or written mayoral approval," close quote, "would be allowed." Being very familiar with that Supreme Court decision myself, I actually believe that the latest interpretation is the correct one. However, I believe the concerns that she expressed in her first statement still hold true. And in my opinion, the only flags that should be flying at city hall, and this is what I stated with the previous flag raising ceremony for my council colleague and when we just had some informal discussions about this in May. In my opinion, the only flags that should fly at city hall are the US, the state of Michigan, the city of Livonia, perhaps some other military or public safety organization flags. But more, more importantly perhaps, I think it's, I don't think it's in our citizens' best interest for the mayor, whoever the mayor is, speaking unilaterally as the official, you know, governmental speech for the city. And I think the city council with seven at-large members and is, is in a much better position to, to make those calls than a unilateral decision by the mayor. And, and so as I was thinking about this and how we, what would be a wise way to proceed with this going forward, there's several principles that, that I had in mind. One, that I think with future decisions like this, the council and the mayor need to be in agreement. Two, I think the decision process should be a deliberative one, not one that's made quickly and with plenty of opportunity for input from the general public. And three, and similar to a constitutional amendment process, I think the threshold for approval for something like this, because we're purporting to speak for the entire community, should be so high that any non-standard flag has such overwhelming support that a reasonable citizen would readily recognize that as an expression of the city's official sentiments. So with those principles in mind, I'd like to offer a resolution that the, the law department prepare ordinance language for us to consider that enacts the following policy. One, that the only flags permitted to fly at city hall without special approval from the mayor and the city council are the US, the state of Michigan, city of Livonia and those representing the military or public safety organizations. And two, that any flags not meeting the above criteria require unanimous vote by city council and approval, approval by the mayor before they can be flown. So I'd like to offer that resolution tonight, again, to send to the law department to prepare that language for us to consider at a future study meeting.
Is there a second?
Second. Support that.
Is there anybody on the council who would like to add their comments to this matter?
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Toy?
I, I guess I can see what's going on. I just want to remind council that we flew the Italian-American flag, of which I'm only half. Don't give me credit for being whole. Because we're always right. No, I'm teasing. But anyhow, I'm joking around with you, but in all seriousness, we flew that flag for many years and Edward McNamara started that back 100 years ago. So I can, I could see Mr. Barr's point, but I can also see that the United States flag stands for all of us. The state flag, which I've served and all of us serve and take an oath of office for, have also, would, would accept, and the city flag, the city of Livonia flag. All other flags then need to be considered eventually by, I guess, the mayor's in charge of the city. And I'm not so sure where this is going. I would like more time to look at it, since we do have a history of flags in this community with the Italian flag being one, not to pick on my fellow Italians, but you know, we get into some areas and I think that's why perhaps, I don't want to second guess a mayor, but maybe that's why the US and the state flag and the city flag were, were spelled out initially in that. So I would, you know, like to offer a substitute to put this into committee of the whole and not do a resolution this evening until we study this further. So I'm asking for a substitute.
Mr. Barr, do you accept that substitute?
You don't need me, no.
We have a motion on the floor.
I don't support it.
So. Anybody like to support Ms. Toy's motion going once? There is no support for the motion.
Thank you. Okay.
Any other comment from the council in regards to Mr. Barr's motion?
Mr. President?
Mr. McCullough?
I had a very little time to review this prior to the meeting. There's a couple items that did stick out to me, even in this language in, in this letter I had, about a unanimous vote. Putting it in reference as my colleague, Councilwoman Toy brought up is, we've been doing the Italian-American flag. The Albanian flag was raised and I think that was a great ceremony. We recently did have the pride flag ceremony. And I think, I, I was at that flag raising and, and there's over 150 people, it was very supportive. I'm sure at Mr. Donavich's, it was also fairly supportive. This is something that I, I think puts too much policy on. I, I think that in administrative review, I, I will not be supporting this motion. I think that, that recent ceremony that we had pushes our city forward. And I'd like to see more of that. It could be structured, maybe there is more of a formal process that could be made, but a unanimous decision from council seems slippery. So I am gonna be voting no, thank you.
Anybody else from the council? We'll go to the audience in regards to this matter. Does anybody in the audience like to address Mr. Barr's motion? I see nobody from the audience at this time. I'll ask Ms. Nash to take the vote in regards to the motion made by Mr. Barr and seconded by Mr. Morgan.
Councilmember McCullough?
No.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
No.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President Jolly?
No. The motion passes. The law department is directed to create that language for future consideration that will come before the council and be studied at that time. At this time, is there anything else from the council?
Council President?
Mr. Ma, or Mr. McCullough?
Just kind of jotting some stuff down. I too would like to offer a resolution to throw the item of civil and human rights protections as they relate to the city of Livonia. And I'd like to offer that into committee of a whole, if I may? Looking for support?
I'll support that for sake of discussion.
Go ahead, Mr. McCullough.
Just kind of, you know, I didn't really have anything prepared on this, this kind of was off the cuff. As we trudge forward as a city, trying to be welcome to all, I know that there's been a lot of discussion in regards to different ordinances and everything that is in place. A lot of things haven't been touched since I think one of the items since 1982. And in light of different things, I think this would be a good time to at least start the discussion and put something into committee of a whole that we can sit down and at least potentially add something to that hasn't been touched for over 30 years.
Anybody on the council like to add to that? Ms. Toy, anything?
Well, the only thing I would like to say is, I would like to study these issues further and that's why I was trying to order, or excuse me, that's why I was trying to offer committee of the whole on, on the flag issue. And, you know, I welcome the discussion from all our colleagues on this, rather than popping these up at one meeting and making decisions or, you know, wherever we're going on this stuff, let's, let's discuss it. And invite our mayor in and have her discuss it or her administration or whoever, so that we can all be on the same page. This, this begins to be very divisive when we do certain ways of doing things and not having protocol and trying to establish by many voices instead of just a few. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Excuse me, Mr. Barr?
Yeah, I just want to remind Councilwoman Toy, who's been on this council for a long time and knows this, that the, the last issue was to send, prepare language that we'll have plenty of opportunity to consider at a study meeting. So there will be ample opportunity for exactly what you're asking for. As far as this proposal on the table, I just need more detail, I'm, I'm unclear as to what we're voting for. I'd be curious to know from Mr. McCullough, I, I haven't heard specifically what this is about. I haven't heard specifically what he wants to address. I have not heard specifically where he sees an issue or what the need for it is. And I don't, I'm not comfortable voting on things that I'm not clear on what they are. So if he wants to elaborate, I'd welcome that.
Well, if I may?
Go ahead.
Alright, so let's, if, if we're gonna get more specific, the nondiscrimination ordinance hasn't been updated since 1982. That would be a specific topic item to bring the light to the table for discussion purposes. Other than that, the civil and human rights protections, that is, I guess in general, according to that ordinance, to be modified, updated or created.
Ms. McIntyre?
Again, I, I'd like to ask for clarification. The mayor has been advocating for a very specific nondiscrimination ordinance. Are you asking the committee of the whole to take up the mayor's nondiscrimination ordinance?
I am not. I'm taking up a specific conversation starting point to discuss any measures for the nondiscrimination ordinance that hasn't been touched since 1982.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
I, I would just like to point out that every, I shouldn't speak for the entire council, but I know everyone here, every single person on this council, every elected official in this city wants to protect the human rights and dignity and respect of everyone in this community. And there've been unfortunate incidences over the last two years on both sides of the spectrum where that hasn't happened. You cannot legislate civility. And the mayor at any time, the mayor has a very significant staff of people. At any time that she wanted to, the mayor could appoint any one of the people that worked for her to be an ombudsman for this issue. And we have not seen any action from the mayor's office to take this issue up, to take accountability or move this forward. So I'm, I'm not going to support putting this in committee of the whole, but thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Toy?
This may be, this may be why we need to discuss some of this, everyone, because we haven't talked about it in some time. And I'm not only talking about the NDO, I'm talking about other issues that have come before this community. And I think it's time that we perhaps look at it in a more in-depth measure. If we want to do that, as, as some have suggested at a study meeting, we can do that, obviously. But committee of the whole used to be where we could get into the nuts and bolts of things and get many voices on it and our department heads and what do they face? And the administration and where they're coming from and where some of us are coming from, where our experiences have been. Those are the kinds of healthy discussions I think that elective bodies have to have. And if we deny that, then we are just saying, okay, this is the way we're gonna have a go and whatever. And some of us are on record against the NDO. I have a big problem with the MDO when it comes to business as well. So I would like to voice that and share with you my experiences in that venue. I deal with weddings, I deal with funerals in my business. It can get a little interesting at times, in changing times. And so I think the chamber also had question, questions on some of that. I don't think this is only about the NDO. I think we've had other issues in this community. We've had marches, we've had people being very concerned about social issues, okay? And our police department needs to be heard. I don't, you know, I mean, Scott probably knows a heck of a lot more police officers than I do, but I'm just saying, I don't hear from all of that. And I would truly, truly like to hear the many voices. That's why I'll be supporting the motion, just so you're clear.
Anybody else from the council? Mr. McCullough?
If I may, just, just to echo it, you know, just to put some specifics, this is just a, a starting a conversation. That is it. This is nothing to. This is nothing to support, anything that's been out there. I know there's been talk. This is to put us at the table and start discussing all across the board. So realistically, if we put something, that's why I kind of left it very high level, so that we could start a discussion, if that is permissible.
Ms. McIntyre?
There are a lot of issues in the city to which council could open the floor to have debate and discussion. There are probably 1,000 of those issues. But opening the floor to have a discussion about something as vague and nebulous as human rights and what we do, there, to me, is no point in putting something into committee of the whole unless we are contemplating a specific action. Because otherwise, what you have is you have 8,000 different voices with 15,000 different perspectives all shouting at you. And if there's a specific thing that Mr. McCullough would like to have discussed, like the mayor's NDO, put into committee of the whole. But having a, having an unstructured committee of the whole on a broad topic, I mean, we could do this on environmental, we could do this on electrification, we could do this on religious liberty, we could do this on public safety in general. And you would end up with hours spent in a room with a lot of people wanting to be heard, and at the end of the day, what we'd have is 50 hours of people voicing opinions with nothing to act on. So, that's why I'm not supporting it.
Mr. Donavich?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to my colleagues for having a discussion. I think every day the city of Livonia works with civil rights and human protections. Our police department and law department, every single day, look out for each and every single member of this community, regardless of where you come from, what you look like. My family are immigrants, council's made up of different people, our city's made up of different people, our community's made up of different people. So, I'm not sure what this topic pertains to, other than just a broad spectrum, which to my colleague's point, you can open the door to a broad spectrum of many things, but if you're going to have a specific discussion on a specific topic, that I can understand. But in its current format, I can't support this broad, this broad proposal, because I just don't know what we're talking about, other than just a very broad discussion. Thank you, Mr. President.
If there's nothing else, Mr. Morgan?
Yes, I'd just like to say, I fall in line with that. This is a very broad topic, and what he had, Mr. McCullough had indicated wasn't very specific, and what he did indicate, we already have laws in place that cover that. And I'm not going to be in favor of anything unless it's very specific and we know exactly what topic we're going to be talking about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Toy?
If you care to open, which I don't have my computer with me at the moment, the committees, you'll see there's an environmental in there. Urban environmental is assigned to one of my committees, right? And in fact, I think I made the motion. So, sometimes things are in committees to be brought, and that, that issue is a very broad issue, because it touches a lot of different areas in this community. It could go from recycling to water to whatever that committee chooses to do. We're an elected government, everyone. We, you know, we have to talk to all kinds of people, and we have to deal with all kinds of issues. There's nothing wrong with putting something into a committee that is a broad issue, that gives us, that gives us many voices to look at it, and it might create some great policy. I think people are stuck on an NDO, quite frankly. I think that's what everybody's stuck on right here. And I'm not only talking about an NDO, I'm talking about a broader issue, as I stated before. I want to hear from the people that work here, day to day, and what in the heck they're seeing. I don't need to sit here and hear the residents come in and rip on us, you know what I'm saying, on some of these issues. So, that's all I'm asking for. If there's anything suspicious about that, I'm sorry, but search me. Honestly, nothing.
Ms. McIntyre?
Through the chair to my colleague, Councilwoman Toy. So, you put an issue into committee, it's your committee?
Yes.
Have you had a meeting on it?
Yes, several.
And what came out of it?
Basically, we talked a lot about recycling and the carts and advertising for the city. We held off because we're having, as you know, the contracts coming up next year, I believe it is, as well. So, we kind of held off on that, going to perhaps bigger bins. We had residents giving testimony.
Let's stay on point.
I'm sorry.
I just, let's not go too far off.
But there was no action, and there was no council resolution or anything that came out of it?
I believe there was. I believe there was, yes, because we were going to apply for some grants as well.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anybody else from council? Last opportunity. Does anybody in the audience at this time wish to address or comment on Mr. McCullough's motion regarding civil and human rights being studied by the committee of the whole, going once, twice? Audience communication is closed. At this time, I'll ask Ms. Nash to take the vote on this matter.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
No.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
No.
Councilmember Donavich?
No.
Councilmember Morgan?
No.
President Jolly?
Aye. The motion is denied for three. The item will not move forward. At this time, I will conclude, if there's nothing else from the council, I will conclude council communication. At this time, we'll get moving on our agenda here. If you're here for the agenda for the 7:00 meeting, it will be relatively quick, I promise, despite our very slow start here. Announcements from the president, we are going to be celebrating Ms. Nash's birthday on July 14th. She'll be turning something like 24 or something like that.
Congratulations.
We have new data on item number two, that is a letter received from a resident in regards to a block party, and we have two X items that have been added due to time constraints on the end of this evening's agenda that will require motions to hear. At this time, we'll move on to the consent agenda, or excuse me, we have reports from the mayor and other city officials as well, specifically communication from the Department of Finance dated June 6th regarding various financial statements for the city from the month ending in April 30th, 2022, communication from Parks and Rec dated June 16, 22, regarding fee changes approved by the Parks and Recreation Commission for the first two quarters of 2022, and an audit report from the Livonia Housing Commission for the fiscal year ending in December 31, 21, excluding Silver Village, Newburgh Village, and the Community Development Block Grant Program and single-family city-owned properties. At this time, we'll go on to the consent agenda.
So moved.
Let me explain it real quick, Ms. Toy.
Pardon me.
Just for those of us who don't get the pleasure of doing this all the time. The consent agenda this evening is items 1 through 12. These items were previously studied at the study meeting on June 27th and found to be not requiring any additional study and will be voted on as a single item. At this time, Ms. Toy has offered an approving for that. Is there a second?
Support.
Second from Mr. McCullough. Is there any audience communication in regards to the consent agenda, items 1 through 12? I see none at this time. I will ask Ms. Nash to take a vote on the consent agenda.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. Items 1 through 12 pass. We'll move on to item number 13, that is a roll call vote, a proposed amendment to the Livonia Code of Ordinances as amended from the Department of Law, two men's sections 130 and 140 of Title III, Chapter IV, Financial Procedures. First reading was given by Councilmember Donavich on June 27, 22.
Mr. President?
Mr. Donavich.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to offer a second reading with a proposed change to exempt all lobbying firms from the proposed changes, keeping them to the original dollar amount.
Procedurally, I don't believe that that's possible. I'll refer the item to our city attorney. Typically, my understanding is, by way of this question, typically a first reading and a second reading are both opportunities of the actual changes in ordinance that we will be voting on and require those two opportunities for notice to the community, but I'll refer that to the Department.
I will say, I wish I had a heads up on it, because I would have done some research on the issue, but that's my understanding also, what Mr. Jolly said, because we did have a first reading on it. But I can't, I'm not going to sit here and say I'm 100% positive on that, because I've never had the issue come up. But my understanding was, once you had the first reading, you either vote for, you have a second reading, you either vote for it or you vote against it.
Thank you, Mr. President.
So, Mr. Donavich, at this time, do you withdraw that motion slash second read that was offered?
Yes, I'd like to withdraw that and offer the original second reading, please. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, we have a second reading on the table. Any comment from the council in regards to the second reading? We'll go Ms. Toy and then Mr. Barr.
Mr. Chair, what parameters are we operating on? I'm sorry, I was watching on TV and I forgot what parameters it was in. Is this setting a cap, right, on spending? Yeah, and that dollar amount was 20, or is, am I right on that, you guys, or 20,000?
Excuse me. My understanding is that the cap to approve purchases by the city administration would be raised from 15 to 20 under the first reading that was provided.
Okay. That's what I wondered.
So, Mr. Barr?
Yeah, I just have a question through the chair of the law. Paul, correct me if I'm wrong, I missed the last meeting, I was out of town, but this, there was a proposal on the table that we considered at a committee meeting. At that committee meeting, there was a different proposal that came out of that committee meeting that was brought to this council for first reading, and then we have a third version in our packet, which I believe reflects changes that were made at the time of the first reading. And so, I'm trying to understand why we can make changes then and we can't make changes tonight.
The changes were made before the first reading. There was a motion, there was a motion by council to amend it, and the amendment was made, it was accepted by the majority of the councils at that meeting, and then there was the first reading on the amended proposal.
Okay. I have another question for you on this, in looking at those three versions, and this may just be a technicality that doesn't mean anything, but I want to make sure. There were, try to get my notes straight here, in the original version that was given to us, what was, and give me a second here, I'm looking for it, what was Section E, and that's not the one I have in front of me, so I'm going off memory here, but the point is, there was a section in it that had red strike-throughs and showed changes, and then what was given to us at first reading and tonight, the next two versions, what is now Section F, all those strike-throughs are gone, as if it was part of the original ordinance. And I'm wondering if that creates an issue for, I think I understand what you're trying to do, it was just confusing, because the strike-throughs that showed changes from the original are no longer there.
Right. The original proposal that was given to council and that went to the committee meeting was changed after council had the input on and moved it on to the regular meeting.
Correct.
We made a change in the formatting of the ordinance, because the ordinance itself was difficult to follow, because they had, in some portions, as council's aware, you have the 1,500 or the $3,000 limit, then you had the 15,000, the 20,000, then you had things dealing with bidding or quotes, and they weren't logically placed anywhere. You had to jump around to find the difference when you required a bid, when you required a quote, when you didn't require any of it. And so, we tried and we placed it for the first reading, I believe it was for the first reading, in the logical order, so you could look at it just based on, not changing the substance at all, but changing the formatting, so you could see if it's under 3,000, this is required, if it's between 3 and 15, this is required, if it's under 20, this is required. So, the formatting was changed somewhat, but the exact language is exactly the same as it was, if that makes sense.
Okay, I just didn't, yeah, and again, I recognize the latest proposal, I think, reflects what we talked about, so I don't necessarily have a particular problem with that content. It was just the fact that where it was originally shown as a change, it's no longer shown as a change, which it is a change, and I just, for the record, I didn't know if that created any issues legally.
I will tell you, I will tell you, it was confusing, because there were so many different iterations of this ordinance being changed, you know, with the different amounts, but this, but the amount of it, but the substance is exactly the same as it was for the first reading.
Okay, yeah, and I recognize that. So, one final question and a procedural question. In light of the change that Mr. Donavich tried to make, if that changes things for me with how I vote for this, let me say this differently, if we as a council, and I do not know where my colleagues are on this, but if we as a council did not want to pass this as it is, obviously, we could bring it to a vote and it could be voted down, but as an alternative to that, would it be, is it possible to offer a substitute to, would it be to send it back to committee, or would it be to, maybe the best thing is...
I think, if I may, if this were to proceed to second reading and not pass, I think you could offer it with changes again as a separate item and go from there.
Okay, I got you, okay.
But we'd have to start the process over?
Understood.
With a first read and...
Yeah, I mean, is that, with, I mean, I know Mr. Jolly's an attorney, but I just want to, I think he's probably right, right?
He is correct in that.
Okay. I will just say then, I, the concern that led to Mr. Donavich's proposed change tonight is an important concern to me, especially in light of recent events within the city and how things were done on the sly to keep them from council, and while I see a lot of merit in a lot of this proposal, I, I'm not interested in supporting it without that change. Had it, had, the version that came out of committee, I thought made a ton of sense. It still gave the city administration much of what they were asking for, as far as lifting the limits for bids and for quotes, but kept the amount that required council approval at the same amount. I thought that was reasonable. I'm not happy with the changes that have been made, especially in light of not being able to add that tonight, so I'll be voting no on this. Thanks.
Counsel, if I could, just so we understand all the options, one option is, this is an ordinance, so it could be passed as is, and the council could try to amend that portion of it later on if it wanted to, so that is another option.
Okay. Anybody else from the council on this item?
Mr. President?
Ms. Toy?
I guess, the logic I follow on it, and I applaud Mr. Donavich for doing this and bringing it forward, is that costs have gone up so much anymore, whether it be you're in business or you're trying to run a city, it makes some sense, but I like the addition as Councilman Barr has pointed out, so if we can bring that up at another time, that would be great. Or, I wonder, could you delay this till the 25th, but it wouldn't still fall under there, right, under the second reading, is what you're saying? Never mind, I just answered my own question. Sorry, Paul.
Mr. Jolly, Mr. President?
Mr. Donavich?
To the law department, through the chair, is that a potential to table it until further discussion?
It's only a potential to table.
And is that by a vote, or is that by one council member?
Okay, we have a second read on the table. Anybody else from council? I see none at this time. We'll go to audience communication. Is there any audience comments or information in regards to this item? I see none, no one's approaching the podium. I'll ask Ms. Nash to take the vote on item number 13.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
No.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
No.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. The item passes, we'll move on to item number 14, that is a block party request from Maggie McGrane to be held on Saturday, August 27, 2022, from 1:00 to 10:00 p.m. on Rayburn Street, between Levann and Williams.
So moved.
Oh, so we, come on up to the podium, please. We have a motion from Ms. Toy, can I have a second from the council?
Support.
Oh, pick that one, Jim.
Did you offer the second? Mr. Barr's offered the second on that item. Are you Ms. McGrane?
Yes, hi.
Thank you for joining us, it's been a long night. Can you tell us about the block party?
Yeah, so, we are barbecuing, music, bounce house, et cetera, on Rayburn Street, between Levann and Williams.
Okay.
Starts at 2:00.
Okay. Have you invited all the neighbors and all the applicable? They're all excited and happy and all that kind of stuff?
Yeah, hopefully they come.
Okay, well, we're happy to have you here. Typically, we just like to have people come and give people an opportunity, number one,[1739.33] Typically, we just like to have people come and give people an opportunity, number one, to tell us what's going on, because it's a kind of a community sort of thing, right? It's your community, but people might object and all that kind of stuff. Does anybody in council have any information or objections here? I see none. Any audience information, comments? I see none. Ms. Nash, will you take the vote on this, please?
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. You're all set.
Thank you.
Good luck, we appreciate your attendance and your organizing this event. Okay, so we'll go on to item number 15, block party request from Rebecca Drizwicki to be held Saturday, September 24, 1:00 to 6:00 p.m. on Park Lane between Clarita and Margarita, rain date of October 1, 2022. Are we going to have the Drizwicki kids speaking here? I think that would be appropriate. But before we do that, can I have a motion from the council?
So moved.
Mr. Donavich?
Approving.
Approving. From Donavich, support from McCullough. Drizwicki kids, young men.
Yes, I brought the honorable Drizwicki children to petition on behalf of our block party.
You look like their attorney, to be honest with you.
Yes.
Good evening, gentlemen. What are your names?
Jack Sanderswicki.
I'm Camus Sanderswicki.
All right, what are you guys planning on doing on September 24th?
Block party.
I like these kids much better than their dad.
On September 24th, we would like to have a block party, our first one since 2019. It's not just for our Park Lane neighbors, but all our surrounding neighbors to come together and celebrate our incredible community. Everyone is welcome, everyone is welcome. We have, we will have some food, games, prizes, and lots, and a lot of fun, and a lot of fun.
Good job. Any additional information, or we all?
In 1978, President Jimmy Carter issued proclamation 4601 officially recognizing National Good Neighbor Day, starting, "As our nation struggles to build friendship among the peoples of this world, we are mindful that the noblest human concern is concern for others. Understanding love and respect build cohesive families and communities. The same cements our nation and the nations of the world. For most of us, this sense of community is measured and expressed in our neighborhoods, where we give each other an opportunity to share and feel part of a larger family. I call upon the people in the United States and interested groups and organizations to observe such day with appropriate ceremonies and activities."
That sounds like the launching of a city council campaign. So I'll, we have a motion.
They agreed with that, I saw that.
We have, we have an approving motion here, I'll just say for the record. Although I'm not a direct neighbor, I've been to this party several times.
Are you allowed back?
Street full of great neighbors, because I behave myself, unlike you. So best wishes, and we'll go from there. Any, go ahead.
Just Drizwicki gentlemen and mom, great job. Thanks for coming up and representing your community. I would be so afraid if I was up there when I was your guys' age. So great job for having so much courage to get up there and talk to all these people in suits and ties and whatnot, so, great job, guys.
Okay, if there's no comments or information from the audience, I'll ask Ms. Nash to take the vote.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. You have seven votes, and the block party can proceed. Good job, gentlemen and mom. At this time, I will entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
So moved.
Support.
Motion from Toy, support from Donavich. We have two X items, well, two X items on the agenda this evening. To proceed here and hear them, we will need a vote of the council. Any comment from the council on the motion to suspend the rules? I see none. Any comment from the audience to suspend the rules? I see none. Ms. Nash, take the vote to suspend the rules.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Vice President Toy?
Yes, here.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye, the rules are suspended. We'll go to X1, proposed acquisition of tax-foreclosed property from the Livonia Housing Commission to acquire property located at 19500 Farmington Road for a total of $24,715, which includes closing costs through the Community Development Block Grant Program. Ms. Isaacson, I can see you a little bit better now up here, welcome to the meeting. Tell us what this is.
I'm in the dark.
Well, actually, before I say that, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Support.
Motion from Toy, support from Ms. McIntyre. Go ahead.
Okay. Brandy Isaacson here tonight to request the authorization from city council to move forward and purchase the foreclosed property located at 19500 Farmington Road for the amount of Every year, July 1st, Wayne County does release a list of foreclosed properties to the city of Livonia and does permit the city of Livonia what they call the first writ of refusal. This allows us to be able to obtain those properties to be used for purposes that, in our case, are going to benefit the community. This specific property is a blighted property. The plan is to demo the property and sell the lot. Typically, we do offer the lot first to the neighbors, to see if they would like to obtain it. And then next, it would be to possibly a developer or somebody to build a new house on this lot.
Sounds good. Any comments from the council? I see none. Any comment?
Just that this is an outstanding program, and we saw, I think it was at our last meeting, we had a family here who has become owners of one of the houses that was secured through this process, correct?
Mm-hmm, yes. And I do want to clarify that the city does not make any profit on the sale of these properties.
Right.
We are required to return any funds above and beyond the cost to demo, maintain, whatever it is to maintain this lot, back to the state of Michigan.
Yep, so everyone wins.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Any audience communication on this item? X1, I see none. Ms. Nash, take the vote, please.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Councilmember McIntyre?
Aye.
Council, Vice President Toy?
Aye.
Councilmember Barr?
Aye.
Councilmember Donavich?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
President Jolly?
Aye. X1 passes. We'll go to X2, a proposed acquisition of tax-foreclosed property at 34200 Hathaway for $154,200, including closing costs through the Community Development Block Grant.